Or in a 15 minutes. All right, everyone, welcome to this Provo Municipal Council Work Session Meeting. It is 1:34 PM Tuesday, June 21st. Members of the public can view council meetings on YouTube, Facebook, or they may attend in person in the council chamber at the Provo City Center. I remind participants to meet your microphone when not speaking to minimize the potential for background noises and conversations to be picked up, recorded, and broadcast for all to hear. In the chambers here with us today, we have council members Ellsworth, Hoban, McKay, Shipley, and Whipple. We also are joined by Wayne Parker, our CAO, and several members of council staff who are the ones keeping this meeting going. Thank you, staff. The opening prayer will be by council member Catrice McKay.
Dear only Father, we're grateful for this lovely day and we're grateful for the moisture we received this spring. We pray that we can be wise in our decisions and that we make a point of getting the information that we need. We are grateful for our country and the democracy in which we live, and we say these things, "Name Jesus Christ," amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilor McKay. Although this is a public meeting, only the presenters and those invited by the council may speak or ask questions unless otherwise invited by the chair. Please wait to speak until called upon by the chair. Our first item of business is a discussion on the progress of last year's council budget priorities. This is presented by our interim executive director and, let's see, senior policy analyst, John Magnus.
Good afternoon, Council. So last year, part of the budget document is a statement from the council about its budget priorities. We went through it and looked at last year's budget after, since we're coming to the end of the year. We're evaluating how well the budget matched the budget priorities. So the first one was improve retention of existing employees, recruit new employees by restoring market rate wage benefits for existing oppositions. We went through that. There was a market rate increase last year. The two biggest ones that you saw were police and fire. We had to do a mid-year adjustment for both of them. They restored the stickly buyback. They picked up the coverage of the employees' healthcare and birth parent and adoptively, but add so all in all, they did a really good job on this priority for the council. Improve capacity in public safety include increase the number of budget officers and develop a plan. We did increase the FTEs by two. One was getting rid of two civilian FTEs, increasing one police officer FTE. One was a brand-new added FTE for sworn officer. The plan work hasn't been completed. It's going to be carried through through F20, fiscal year '23, and is again a priority for the council to find a way to the financing to increase the FTEs to bring them in line with the national standards. The zoning enforcement was a big one. We did fund, restore their back to six FTEs. They have begun implementing all the recommendations from the zoning committee that were given out. They're working through that right now. But because how the FTEs were staged, they didn't get their sixth FTE until January of this year. That's when they were allowed to post for it. The position was hired in February, so council staff is waiting till February of '23 to actually go back and conduct a study, a program evaluation to see how well they have done with implementation now that they're full staffed. We're going to give them one year. Make significant process landing the streets parking management plan. This one didn't go so well. It took a while for them to hire a parking coordinator. It was a difficult process. It took them two rounds before they actually hired somebody. They have implemented a new parking management system at the airport that can be imported to the rest of the city. You'll get a presentation today from the parking coordinator and where they're sitting. So they are moving forward on this goal, this priority. It has been difficult for different reasons, but they are making progress. Oh, the last thing is, as you know, well aware of during last November, when we tried to create a new parking scheme for the Joaquin neighborhood, those residents up there were not happy. So we still need buy-in from the residents if we're going to do parking, paid parking anywhere because it's not uniform.
Nice question. On the parking program at the airport, is that a program that, like a brand-new program, or is that something that we are just putting a new system in place? I mean, is it a program that we can use elsewhere in the city? What what's your understanding?
From what I understand is we can take the new, it is, I mean, it is a new program, right? It's a new, it's a new program with an app where you can pay for your parking. So that's a whole new system. And yes, they are looking to ways to incorporate it into the rest of the city to expand it. If the council desires to go that route with more paid parking in different parts of the city.
So it's that app pay for time that we talked about potentially utilizing in Joaquin before? Okay, thanks.
But you know how Joaquin goes every time we talk about pig parking. So we don't have universal buy-in by the community. So that's also causing some issues doing that.
Quick question on that. If Dave's done. Was the airport parking implementation part of the strategic parking management plan all along?
I don't, I'll have to look that up. I don't recall. I think the parking plan only covered the city. I don't think the airport, I think the airport was separate from parking plan, but I'll look into that and get back to you.
Okay, thanks.
And then the last one was because of the pandemic, we had cut, but the city had cut FTEs to get through because we weren't sure where our sales tax is going to be. We knew that the park district, Parks and Rec, we're going to lose money. People can't use the facilities. So we had cut quite a bit in FY '21 to prepare for the pandemic. So the council had requested that after you complete all those other goals, if there's still money left, start looking at bringing FTEs back that were cut. So 9.3 FTEs were restored in the FY '22 budget that were cut because of the pandemic, and that was across five different departments. And they have restored most of programs, or most of the FTEs of this cycle, and the ones that weren't restored were cut. So they have completed this goal. So any questions about FY '22 budget priorities?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay, thank you.
John, thank you. Next item of business is a presentation regarding transportation demand management parking policies. We can push this back if we need to. All right, we'll go on. We'll come back to that item. Well, can't do that one either. We'll have to wait. Malia, are you prepared to present on a discussion on council assignments to boards and commissions? We'll go to item number eight, and then we'll come back, back to item number two and the subsequent items. Go ahead, Malia, daily policy analyst for council.
Awesome. So this is, we realized that there was a council member that was on two boards that met at the same time, and so we're just adjusting this so that way we have a council member on each board and they're not overlapping. So Bill was on both T-Mac and another one, Parks and Rec. And so what we're doing is we're taking him off of one and then putting Catrice on one, so that way there is no overlap. So it would just need to be done through a motion by the council and then adopted.
So which one is, is Bill giving up and Catrice joining?
Yeah, the Parks and Rec one.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that Catrice McKay, Councilmember Catrice McKay, be added to the Parks and Rec Board and that Bill Fillmore be removed from that board. Second on the motion by Councilor Ellsworth, discussion on the motion.
Are we just proposing that mayor do this, or how does this technically go?
These are council liaisons, so they're not voting members of the board. They're just assigned as liaisons from the municipal.
Okay, so I need to amend my motion that Catrice McKay be appointed as council liaison to the Parks and Rec Board and that Bill Fillmore be removed as liaison to the Parks and Rec Board.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilor Ellsworth. Any discussion on the motion? Thanks, Councilor Shipley, for clarifying that. That's why we're bad to have you back. Glad to have you back. Yeah, and thank you, Councilor McKay, for adding that to your plate. Okay, if there's no further discussion on the motion, we'll go ahead and we'll do a roll call vote. I'll start with me. I will vote yes. Counselor Hanley is excused. Counselor Ellsworth?
Yes.
Counselor Fillmore is excused. He'll be here back, he'll be here in a few minutes. Counselor McKay?
Yes.
Counselor Shipley?
Yes.
And Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
That's unanimous with Counselors Fillmore and Hanley excused. Well, that's the last item we can do until we get somebody from the city. They're on their way. Yeah, we'll, we'll kill some time here by asking the mayor if she's, would like to, to report on the Juneteenth activity.
It was just, with it being literally, it's only been one year since it's been a federal holiday. So we wanted to wrap our arms around it and really own it. A couple of things besides being a paid holiday, the state said they were going to keep it on continually happening on a Monday. And I felt like because it's a date, it's the 19th of June. So Provo, we are going to roll with it, just like the Fourth of July. We don't always celebrate the Fourth on a Monday, right? I just feel like out of respect for the holiday, we will roll with the 19th. So next year, it hits on a Monday, and then it'll be on a Tuesday. So that was one fun announcement. And then we were brainstorming how to wrap our arms around it and make sure that we celebrated it in a way that brought people together. And the idea we came up with was just my two words, I just was telling Gene, and he quoted it in the paper, was music and love. We just need to get people to find the love and the best way to do that is through music. So we had the Bonner family perform last night, and Dave was with me, and they did the most amazing concert for us, and it was in the ballroom at the library. They had people up dancing. They were interactive. At the end, they stayed for almost, well, when I was the last to leave, so I wanted to make sure they got out, and almost two more hours to shake hands and take pictures with all the folks. So it ended up being such a positive, and I loved it because I asked them, when you're, don't just sing songs, educate us. And so they did a great job. Dave, go ahead and talk about your experience.
That was great. No, I, just a really lifting, good opportunity to celebrate. So, and the Bonners, of course, are Provo people. I mean, it's great to celebrate them as well as a family, and the father especially made a point, and maybe to your invitation to educate and to help encourage and invite us to be better and do better, and I thought that was really effective. So it was nice. It was a wonderful evening.
Wow, thank you, Mayor, and Wayne, for taking ownership of that. Sounds like it was awesome. So will the observed holiday be on the actual day, or will it still be observed on a Monday, but we'll celebrate on, so the day off is Monday always, or the day off will rotate as well?
The federal government rotates it and is sticking to the 19th.
Okay.
And the state is not at this point. We are going to do it like the federal government, roll with the day because the 19th is the 19th. You can't have it on, you know,
Right.
the 14th and say, "Happy Juneteenth," and then Wednesday be the 19th or whatever.
Yeah.
So I feel like, and Daniel Softley was great. He said, you know, "I feel like this will lead out in the state" because he doesn't, I mean, he just said, "I think the state might get away with it another year," but then they'll see that it's got a number attached to the holiday. So we're going to stay true to that.
I like it. Thank you. All right, yeah, Councilor Ellsworth.
I propose that if it falls on a Tuesday, that we just only have one council meeting that month.
Good point. Is that an official motion? All right, well, Bill Pepperoni's here with us. Thank you, Bill. Looks like he's out of breath from rushing down. We killed a little time for you. We were happy to do that.
Sorry to hold you up.
No, 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 no worries. This is a presentation regarding transportation demand management parking policies presented by Bill Pepperoni, Director of Development Services. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you. So several months ago, in a public hearing, public meeting, one of the council members asked about the parking at Abandoned Night Hall. In that meeting, my response was that we had not received any complaints about the project in regards to parking. And as I thought about that question and I thought about my answer, subsequent to the meeting, I felt like my answer was not very adequate. Based on that, I asked the staff planner to prepare a spreadsheet on the projects that have received TDM parking reductions, and that should be the spreadsheet that you've received for this meeting. Once we created that spreadsheet, I then asked Sandy, I gave it to Sandy Bucio, and I asked her to have parking enforcement personnel drive by these projects to see if we could quantify any type of parking spillover. Today, I'm not asking the council to make any specific decision. This is simply a report on some of the findings that we've come up with and just ask the council for any input that you may have. With those projects that received TDMs, there appears to be some spillover parking occurring. We have not received complaints about these projects, but we have observed some parking spillover. I'd like to back up and first kind of remind the council of how we got to the TDM ordinance we have today. When the ITOD and downtown zones were written, those zones were originally written to allow a 50% parking reduction right off the bat as a right without the developer doing anything to earn that. And that's really not very unusual for cities in their core areas. Their core areas are very mixed-use. They're walkable. There's mass transit. And based on those things, it's very typical for cities to allow significant parking reductions. The first project that came along and took full advantage of the 50% break ended up under parking the project. They ended up providing 75 parking spaces for 100 apartment units. And as soon as it became occupied, we started experiencing parking complaints from the businesses on one side and the residents on the other. It was clear that there was a parking deficit. So we enacted pending legislation so we could kind of get our arms around this, and the TDM ordinance we now have is now growth of that process. There are several things that new ordinance does that the old ordinance didn't, and I think it strengthened in many ways because of that. The TDM does allow still for a parking reduction by right, but that by right reduction is 25%. We justified that because we surveyed many projects and we determined that if a project just got the 25% reduction, we'd still be safe. We should still be all right. We shouldn't experience real problems with spillover. Some other things that the ordinance allowed is that allowed for further reductions beyond the 25%, but the developer had to step up and do certain things to earn that. And it made that planning commission approval of a TDM not a conditional use permit. And that was a very conscious decision because there's a supposition for approval of CUPs in the state. And so when you ever go before the planning commission for a conditional use permit, the planning commission is almost acting at a disadvantage right off the bat because there's a supposition for approval. So this is not a CUP. It's open to the planning commission's discretion to approve it, not approve it, or approve it with less than what the developer has asked for. That's all on the table for the planning commission. The other thing this ordinance does is that you can't go below a one-to-one parking-to-unit ratio. So you can't have that problem like I had, like the example I just gave you. You can't go below one space per unit. The other thing that's very significant about TDMs is that if a TDM is approved, it's actually, it's actually a contract between the city and the developer that says what the developer's supposed to be doing, what the remedies are if they're not doing that, and that is enforceable in court. So it gives us an extra layer of enforcement that we didn't previously have. The nuanced kind of wrinkle or difference in this is that when the TDM ordinance came into place, the city council felt like, let's apply this not just to downtown and ITOD, let's open it up to projects across the city. And that was the biggest difference that took place with the TDM is now this parking reduction could be applied for projects outside of the core area. And this is the area where the planning commission is having the most struggle. They seem to be pretty comfortable with downtown and ITOD parking reductions. It's when we get out into the more suburban areas of the city, like South State Street, like further north, that the planning commission starts to really struggle with, is a reduction really appropriate? So the TDM ordinance itself includes a list of things the developer can do to qualify for the parking reduction. And another question the planning commission has been asking and struggling with is if the developer does that list of things, is that really reducing car ownership, or is that simply reducing vehicle trips per day? Now, if we're only reducing vehicle trips per day, that's still helpful when you have an environment like ours where we have, you know, serious air quality problems. That's still a good thing to be accomplishing, but I think that's a separate issue than car ownership and adequateness of parking on site. As you can see from the spreadsheet, Highline Square, the one that's diagonally across Freedom Boulevard from the Rec Center, is having the most spillover parking. That parking is taking place in the Rec Center parking lot. But I think that may also be largely influenced by what Highline Square charges for parking on site. To get a parking space in their parking structure on site, it's $90 a month. To have a surface parking space on site, it's $50 a month. So it seems attractive to park over in the Rec Center parking lot. Now, some people might say, "Oh, my gosh, that's a problem. We've got people parking on Rec Center parking lot during the night hours." But I think when the city council adopted these rules, the city council, there were city council members who were very influenced by publications like "The High Cost of Free Parking", which a major point of that book and that publication is, cities be careful about just continually requiring more parking. Why don't you first look at using existing parking more efficiently? And certainly using the Rec Center parking lot during the night hours where it's not otherwise used would be exactly what publications like that are saying cities ought to be doing. Another good example of that is the library. The library parking spaces that are right on 600 North, diagonal spaces right on 600 North, 20 of those spaces have been opened up for students or people to rent overnight. And every semester, those fill up very quickly, immediately. People who rented them last semester try to get them back the next semester, and somebody else has already gotten it. So there's more demand than there's supply, which tells me we need to raise our prices. We need to increase the number of spaces. But that's another good example of how using that asset during the night hours where otherwise not be used, where's the harm in that? The other, another wrinkle in this is that, or complication to this is that you never saw the project at 85 East 100 North because that was already zoned property. But there's an apartment complex going there. That's a Utah, that's a Provo Housing Authority project. And the target market there are autistic adults and low-income adults. They receive the biggest parking reduction on your spreadsheet. That's the second one. That's the biggest parking reduction that's been given. And I think that's very adequate, very appropriate, given the clientele. Now, that hasn't been finished yet. It's not occupied. We can't test it. We can't measure it or survey it. But it makes sense to me that they were given a substantial parking reduction. Cascade Gardens is a project that's built on the site of the old St. Francis Church, 500 West and 200 North. I personally surveyed that project many times in the middle of the night. I did that survey when we were doing the TDM ordinance, trying to come up with that 25% or what that should be. They provided full parking on that project. That's a housing authority project that's for low-income adults, and that project seems to be overparked by 25 to 30%. I recently called one of the Housing Authority Board members and asked what their recent experience is, because when I took those counts, it was now a couple of years ago, and he said he still believes it's overparked by 30%. Planning commission concerns then seem to be with commercial uses or shared uses, where it's commercial and residential or office and residential sharing. They don't seem to really be struggling with downtown projects and ITOD projects. It's much more the more suburban projects that are asking for reductions where they're having the struggles that they are. Spreadsheet's been provided to you, and then also parking counts and maps of where the counts were taken and where cars were counted. That's in your packet. Sandy Bucio is here to ask, answer any questions about that or present anything on that you would like. That's all I have from my prepared remarks. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
I'm curious about the Blue Sky development and the justification or the elements that include 131 washer and dryer units provided per unit to offset the incentive, incentivize tenant bus pass. It's on the first column or the first line. The first project, I should say, the fifth TDM element.
Oh, they were, um, it's been a while since, it's been years since that one went through the washer. So some places, so some apartment complexes actually rent to you your washer and dryer. It's not included in your rent. It's rented to you in addition to that. So they were including that in your rent to then hopefully freeing up money for the residents then by parking, by parking passes on the mass transit.
It seems like kind of a stretch to me.
Right.
Maybe we, maybe we would consider not doing that in the future.
Right.
But having more obvious connections to parking.
Like just having them provide the parking passes.
There we go.
Right, yes.
Okay, so I was noticed that in a couple of these, you have things like priority parking for carpool or for ride share. Are either of those things defined? Is it project-specific?
It would be project-specific, but I can't think of one that has used one of those. To me, car share is probably the one that would have the greatest impact on actually reducing car ownership, right?
Right. Yeah, so they have that one for the Blackstone Farms where they had priority parking for ride share. But I just don't know how that looks in the parking structure or the parking lot.
Yeah, Blackstone is a parking lot. It's not a parking structure. And I am not familiar with the site plan itself, the project plan to give an informed decision on that or answer to that.
Yeah, and Highland Square had priority parking for carpool, so a carpool space adjacent to the entrance. And I also don't know what that means, like how that works. Yeah, is it where, I don't know, somebody outside the complex can come and park there so people hop in it, or is it, do you see?
Yeah.
I'm confused. But it sounds like we don't have a standard definition for either of those things. So they would have been negotiated in the contract with the, with the units or the developers. Okay. And then for the Highline Square, was it anticipated that residents would be using the Rec Center parking?
No.
So that was.
I think, I believe, we haven't been able to survey their parking structure because it's a secured structure, and you really want to go in the middle of the night. I do have a staff member still trying to get permission to try to work that out and get in there. But I would be willing to bet you that there are more free spaces in the structure than you would expect. Because people are choosing not to pay $90 a month, and they're just parking across the street. The Cowboy Partner Project right across the street parked at 86%. So they didn't, they were during the days where you could take a 50% break. They didn't take that. They parked at 86. I've been through that structure many times during the night, and there are more empty spaces than you would expect for downtown apartment building. I would guess it's somewhere around 15%. That's vacant, having only provided 86%.
Okay, on the next page in my packet, we had the TDM, and under the 400 element, we have our monthly averages, and I was curious about those evening averages. April, it's 122, but then in May and June, we're down at 14. at fourteen and eleven. I didn't understand how we had a discrepancy of over a hundred vehicles.
I'll let Sandy come up.
Okay.
In this area, on the hundred and twenty two, we did the counts random days. So if there was any event or function going on, we didn't really account for that between six and nine. So you do have, like I say, places there that that they hold events. So that could have been that high number for that time because that was right when graduation was happening. And so there was a lot of events at that time.
Okay, so then we just have the the huge difference between the morning and evening numbers for May and June. So can you speak to that? So sixty five to fourteen or one hundred and eleven to eleven?
Yes, it's the morning hours or three AM to six AM. And we chose that time because that's usually when people that are living there are parked.
Right.
And that's the numbers that that we got. That was this, my senior staff member as well that counted the three AM to six AM. And it was one individual.
Yeah. So do we know really why it's so much lower in the evening though?
Absolutely, that's when people go out.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I would just assume that's when people go out. Right? You come home from work and then you go out to shop or you go to the movies or you go on a date or go out to eat dinner or whatever. So I'm assuming that's probably why.
Okay. And can I do one more? All right. So the four hundred element one. I believe that I've I've heard complaints from the businesses that are within, you know, a block or two of that where they've seen increased on-street parking since the apartment complex has gone in. They're very unhappy about it. So I would would just like to know. Do you feel that the the spillover from that is reasonable? Because the business owners that I've talked to see this as a reason to never ever do reduced parking for any complex ever again.
So if there's any spillover parking, and I think this has demonstrated sufficient enough that we ought to go back to the TDM and meet with the property owner and get their proposals to fix that problem. And if they can't or won't, then I think we should take enforcement action.
So do we have enough data that we can go back to the owner on this one? Should we?
Yes, I think we have enough data to go back. If we're gonna if this should escalate to the point of going to court, I think we're gonna have to do a better job at actually verifying cars to apartment units, which is hard to do when you're doing counts on drive-bys or even walking the block and going by. I think we have adequate data to go meet with the property owner and we will do that. This property owner has been one that's been very good to work with in the past and is doing other projects in the city right now. So I think they're going to be very open to solving any problems they may be creating. But I think that those should be the next steps.
That that would be really good because in this area, it really makes sense to reduce parking requirements so that you are reducing barriers to rural housing and everything like that. But as long as we're getting real complaints, we haven't quite gotten the balance right. And so we need to do that so we can move forward.
Yes, this developer is looking at a project immediately across the street to the east, same, almost the same size project again there. So I think there's going to be some motivation to get this right.
Okay, and as we do that, we should probably also communicate with those business owners just to the north there that their concerns are are heard and that we're working on it.
Anytime you get complaints like that, please forward them over to us.
Okay.
Because this is the first I've heard about complaints and we want to know that. We need to.
I got some of these when I was campaigning even so.
Really? Okay.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, this isn't a complete list of all the projects that have gotten a TDM, is it?
This is all that have gotten TDMS. There've been other projects that got some degree of reduction during the time period when the fifty percent reduction was on the table, like Cowboy Across the Street, like Liberty Center.
Okay.
But this is the complete list of TDM projects. Yes.
Which is the one right by the front runner?
That startup crossing. That's the one that has.
That's not on here. Did they get one?
Not a TDM. That's the one that took a fifty percent break.
Oh, before.
Right.
So I've got a lot of complaints about that place.
Right. That's the one that spurred this whole discussion.
Yeah, it affected the businesses. It affected the people living there. No one's happy.
Right.
Okay. I'm, what was my other question? Oh, like thinking about what Rachel said, we, like with Highline, that was called. We were thinking that the parking so high, they're parking the rec center to save ninety bucks a month. With TDMS, like I think about the one that Rachel was mentioning that they're over. It seems like we could use somewhat as leverage that they can't charge for parking if they have trouble with spillage or something. Like that's something that we could do in our I guess requirements or that if they're having trouble like Highline and like Element.
Yeah, so we had a long debate during TDMS, at least among the staff, about that exact issue. And the concern was if we were to make a rule like you can't charge for parking on site, they'll just raise the rent. And then that then affects people who might stay there if they can find another place to park the car or if they don't have a car. It's just raising the rent. Maybe for people who don't need to have that rent raised. So that we had a long debate over that issue and continue to debate that.
I like the idea that they're, you know, spilling into the rec center and using that at night. That seems great. I also think they're using it during the day. The rec center is very packed as far as their parking. I would imagine that they're taking up some day spaces too. Would it be? Should that be something that we're charging for like we do the library?
Yeah, we certainly could, like the library. I think we'd have to post signs. We just just have to assign that the at the rec center saying no parking overnight unless you have a pass, then we'd sell passes.
Right.
And I would suspect that if we did start charging there, people would take another look at just parking on site. Right? Even if we didn't charge the same amount, if we now made it more attractive to just park on site.
Well, I guess if it's less than what they're charging and then they're, and then they'd be empty.
Yeah. But if I, if, just to make a comment, I mean, I think there's a couple of things to think about in regards to that. I mean, on one hand, i- if you kind of want a property owner to maybe charge for parking to some extent, because it creates a revenue stream that allows them to do maintenance on those parking structures so that they don't deteriorate over time. If they incorporate that into rent, I think it raises the concern that Bill mentioned, but then it also kind of separates out that that money is being pulled in actually for your parking structure, right? And you would hope that they would think of it that way. And I think having it separated helps with that. The other thing I would, I think I would encourage you to think about with maybe posting on the rec center parking is to me, we're trying to think more in terms of parking as an asset within Provo City. And I think that's one of the things that Tom's going to talk about this afternoon. And trying to get our heads around, how do we manage that asset? So if you have a large parking field and you're thinking of it from the perspective of it's an asset, you wouldn't want an asset to stay vacant all night long when potentially there's a possible use for it. And if that use takes cars off the street or eliminates the need for another parking structure somewhere else or another field of parking somewhere else, that's probably a good thing. As long as we don't reach some situation where it's interfering with the rec center use or whatever, then we probably struck a good balance. And so I I think that's how we would want to think about it going forward. Is there a way that all these parking structures begin to interplay with each other? So that they're all seen as an asset and we're educating our public on where they are and what's available so that we're utilizing and kind of reducing the need for more.
Yeah, I do like utilizing them. So how many how many units out of the out of the things done since, out of the projects as we've done TDM? How many did not ask for anything extra above the twenty five percent?
Some of the projects on South State Street, like thirteen twenty did Blackstone. But there's another one that's the one that's built right around the Charter School. Do you remember that zoning coming through? That one didn't ask for any parking reduction there. But it's certainly more of an anomaly. Those that don't are an anomaly.
All right. No additional questions or discussion. Thanks, Bill. Keith, appreciate it. Our next item is an ordinance amending the zone map classification of approximately six point three acres of real property generally located at twelve sixty five south five hundred west. From one family residential R one eight to public facilities and open space preservation recreation. This is regarding the Lakewood neighborhood. And Javin Weaver, our planner, will be presenting today. Thank you, Javin.
So to get you guys familiar with the location, this is down just adjacent to I fifteen by fifteenth south and five hundred west. It was formerly known as Power Lane Park for section of it. On the southwest virtual land use map, it identifies this area as existing park and to be a future park. The circle part is the part that Provo City owns. So the, you can see on this, this is how it currently is functioning. The green portion, kind of the northern diagonal portion is owned by Pacific Power Line, I believe, or Pacific Corp. And we do have permission from them to use on their property. We have received that. The southern portion, the the vacant part with the transformer is the part that Provo City owns. Currently, the zoning for this area is R one eight and the area with the transformer is PF. And currently we're proposing to reason these areas to PF and to the OSPR zone. Now, the OSPR zone only is for publicly owned parcels. The PF zone does allow parks as a permitted land use and allows for private entities to have it being into that zone as long as as it's functioning for the general, for the public. I'm here to answer any questions if you have so.
So it looks like Becky Bogdan was the one who requested this. How does the city feel about it?
It's received a CRC approval for this from all departments and parks. I talked with Parks Department about this and they are in strong favor of this.
Strongly in favor?
Yes.
Got it. Thanks.
And and just help me understand why not the whole thing is the same zone. I mean, if the intention is to have the entire property be a park for this area, why have two separate zones?
It explicitly says for public part publicly owned parcels for the OSPR zone. You can't have private owned parcels in the OSPR zone.
That's the only reason. Okay, thanks.
So in I think most of these in the PF zone, will all those parcels be consolidated into one thing so that we don't have individual parcels anymore?
I have contacted them on that specifically and I'm waiting to hear back on whether they want to or not, but there's no incentive for them to do that because there's no tax incentive for them to combine them into one.
Okay.
It looks like Commissioner Brian Henry and Commissioner Dave Anderson voted against it. Can you explain what the rationale was if you remember?
Previously, there was conversation about this area being, no, but hey, this area, I mean, the purple area being turning into a pocket neighborhood. That discussion has not gone forward because the neighbor does not support of that. And that is ultimately why they chose not to vote in favor for this reason.
Okay. There was once a kind of a, can we say like a higher quality but more compact pocket neighborhood that was proposed in the purple area, right? And the neighbors were opposed to maybe the density. Might be speculating too much, Javin. Chime in here. And now it's being proposed as just recreation use ongoing.
One of the main reasons they want this space for the park is that the other land is privately held, not by the city. And they don't want to do any permanent structures on it like restrooms or pavilions or that. So adding this city-owned area will allow for restrooms and pavilions and stuff. So the park is more functional.
But do we have an easement or a recreation access on the private property or folks trespassing?
We do have an agreement with them to use it as it's functioning right now. And that's currently ongoing and an ongoing agreement.
Okay, and is that is that able to be terminated by them at some point? Or like, what's the horizon of that agreement?
I do not know that answer at the moment.
Thanks.
But I I do know that because of the power lines there, you can't build underneath it.
You can't build under the yellow.
And you kind of, yeah, under the orange part of the dev houses there. So.
Gotcha. Okay, I think there's a, it's probably too late to have this discussion, but I think there could have been more consideration of what would revitalize this part of the city. A park or higher quality housing.
What, if I may say, one, the closest park to this neighborhood is the Footprinters Park. That's over on eleven fifty south and west of eleventh west, maybe about fourteenth west, right adjacent to the future middle school.
Okay.
So this should be the closest park that this neighborhood would have as this area continues to develop.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. Okay, thanks.
Another relevant fact is I talked to Travis from Provo Energy and we have some transformers on this bottom corner. And he was concerned about a paca park being there in the sense that he says we might need to add those transformers as things grow. And it's much easier to add the transformer, something developed as a park as opposed to when those homes already there.
Good thoughts, everyone. Any additional questions or comments? We'll see this tonight or, all right, thank you, Javin. An ordinance, our next item is an ordinance amending the permitted uses in the West Gateway. Sione Manoa? Welcome. Is that how you say it, Sione?
Yes, Sione.
Thank you, Sione.
So so today the applicant is requesting ordinance text amendment to the WG zone, the West Gateway Zone. Currently, he has a business there that doesn't allow him to do what he's wanting to do. And so currently he has, he's wanted to add four new uses. The four new uses in the zone. The reason for the WG zone was to try to improve the entrance of the city going into the heart of Provo. At Center Street, the goal was to encourage the area to avoid used car sales. And that's currently what he wants to do. And it was designed to specifically to leave that out of the West Gateway Zone. Currently, those four is the four things that he's trying to add is new and used car sales, service stations and automobile repair in the West Gate Zone, which hinders the general, the general plan. Now I'll move over to where the West Gateway Zone is on the on attachment to kind of shows that entrance off the fifteen going to Center Street. Will kind of give a better idea of that zone, the West Gateway Zone. And so yeah, if there's a any thoughts for tonight that I can prepare for the meeting or if you have any questions.
I'm curious what the council thinks about this being, you know, this would be part of our kind of our gateways to the city initiative. How do we feel about that?
Just make the general comment that I think there's the consensus on the council to move towards enhancing our gateway areas both cosmetically and then functionally. And so I'm not sure what kind of reception this will get.
Just some receptions from from the
Tonight.
For tonight. Oh, yes. Same.
Counselor Whipple, go ahead.
Yeah, so I've seen some really lovely used car dealerships. I've seen some really tacky ones as well. And I do think it's interesting that he's proposing that we change the entire zone for his use as opposed to asking for something more specific to his property.
Where is his property on here?
So it's right across the street from Maverick's gas station. So it's right across the street from Maverick's Gas Station. It's the Sinclair Gas Station right there in that corner. So I mean, it's, it's an eye view right off of center on that left hand side when you get on to the 15, come off the 15.
Go ahead, Counselor Fillmore.
I'll address this question to you as well as to Bill and Keith. I think our hope would be that we'd take a more holistic approach to this West Center Gateway as opposed to piecemeal. Do you have any comments on that?
Yeah. So, so we agree. And so the recommendation was to not approve it. And, and the thing, you know, the applicant during the planning commission hearing wants to specifically talk about the types of things that he wants to do at that location, which is interesting, but from my perspective, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about a, an amendment to the entire zone and what could be done in that zone anywhere within that zone. And that's really from my perspective, not what we want in that gateway. And so there's no reason to move it forward. And we tried to encourage the planning commission to think of it that way. That although there may be pretty pictures or pretty concepts or very entrepreneurial approaches that this property owner is thinking about for that location, it's just not really in line with what our vision is for that gateway entrance into Provo City. And, and to amend the ordinance to allow that kind of opens Pandora's box for other opportunities that could happen. And that could become that whole gateway. And, and you know, there, there were some references to, you know, you look at any major I-15 interchange coming into a city and there's all these great dealerships. And, you know, from an economic development perspective, that's wonderful. I just don't think we want it right there. And I think if you kind of change that zone, you're kind of opening that door and we may never be able to get that closed again. So.
Two more questions. What was the planning commission vote in denial?
Pardon me?
What was the vote? It's planning commission?
It was, I can't remember the exact vote.
Six to one against?
Yes, I think it was six to one.
So the planning commission recommended denial. It was a denial.
To deny? Yeah. Yeah. They denied it too.
Second question, what, what can we tell these kind of applicants who have entrepreneurial ambitions in the West Gateway area?
What should we tell them?
Yeah, in terms of the intent of your department to come up with a holistic recommendation for what we want to do. I mean, what kind of timeframe are we looking at? We're, because we're basically telling people like this, wait, we've got a larger vision. We just haven't put it in black and white yet.
Well, I mean, I, well, we've tried to tell the applicant is, you know, it's a good idea. It's just not the right place for that type, that type of business. Not now and probably not in the future. And there are a lot of great things that could be done at that location that are in line with the current vision and the current zoning that we would love to talk about. But, you know, I mean, I think they have a broader perspective about a conglomeration of opportunities there where you could do car repair, some kind of a restaurant that you could eat at while you're getting your car repaired or you could buy a used vehicle. And that's interesting. I'm just not sure that that's exactly the right location for something like that.
Let me put a finer point on my question, Keith, just to sort of clear. If, if you have multiple applicants who come in with less than desirable hopes for property in the West Gateway area. And we tell them, well, we're, we're studying now. In fact, we've commissioned to study on the West Gateway area, how to enhance that entrance to the city.
Yes.
What, what can we tell them reasonably in terms of the timeframe for when we hope that will come together so that they can see exactly what this vision is for the gateway area and make their plans accordingly?
Yeah. I mean, I, I think our hope is that sometime within the next year and a half, we'll start to have a clear definition of what we think the gateways need to look like and what possible amendments, if any, could come into place that would affect those properties or create new opportunities or exclude other opportunities.
So you're thinking it's a year to a year and a half where we should have a.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah.
Thanks.
You bet. Anything else? Anything else?
Well, Sione, thank you. Is this your first time presenting to us? All right. Are you a new employee or you been with us for a while?
I was in zoning for the last five years and then I made my way to planning.
All right. Well, congratulations. Made it to the big leagues. You got called up.
He did a terrific job in zoning.
Awesome. Okay. Uh, I, I don't think we need a break yet. Nobody's tired. Yeah, Bill just got here. I mean, come on. Yeah, Travis doesn't need a break. Let's just put it that way. All right. If we've got, since we've got Keith here, let's just keep rolling and maybe we get Keith out of here earlier, right? A joint resolution for a memorandum of understanding with Smiths and the party's intent to consider incentives for a future development. Hey, Keith Maury, Economic Development Director and David Walter, Director of Redevelopment Agency. Welcome.
Okay. So if you remember, the state passed HB 151 earlier this year. And the intent of that legislation was to eliminate the opportunity for cities to sale, to incentivize large big box retail development. I think the purpose of that legislation specifically was to stop things like Orem taking dealers from Provo as an example. And I get that. I think, you know, we like that concept. This approach is a little clunky. And so as we've expressed that and worked through that with them, one of the, one of the things that they were willing to concede to was that if you had a project that is already underway, you can kind of carve that out and say, we need to preserve the, the opportunity for this potential project because we may need to utilize an incentive sometime after July 1st, when this legislation takes it, takes effect. So we've been kind of communicating that to developers that we've been working with and have a retail component where we thought an incentive might come into play. And the two that kind of have risen to the point where we think it makes sense to do this are the ones that are before you tonight. So the piece of property that's at the intersection of Geneva and Center Street is one that we, has been kind of identified for years as a potential grocery store location. And although that has languished, there's quite a bit of energy and time being spent on that site right now by the property owners, by the city and by a retailer that is interested in taking that spot. And so we just have put together the language that preserves our opportunity to incentivize that. We don't, to be fair, I think that the, the retailer involved wanted there to be a little more detail in this agreement. And we, we just weren't at the point where we had negotiated all those so that I felt that it was appropriate to, to have that included. So we tried to put together an agreement that meets the state requirement that basically just says, we're working on this piece of property. We think there may be the need to incentivize this in some way, either financially or, or to help with infrastructure or with land or things of that sort. And this will preserve our right after July 1st to do that.
For how long?
Hopefully that answers your questions or kind of describes the situation.
How long would, how long does this?
We, we put in the agreement a year. So basically it's like we preserved this right for a year. I mean, and I think although the state legislation doesn't require that, we wanted to do that because we want these projects to move forward. We don't want this to be an ongoing thing. And, and I think that reflects well to the state legislature too, that we're not preserving this right indefinitely. We intend to exercise our opportunity within the next year or we won't.
So for a long time, they haven't wanted to develop on here. And then all of a sudden now they, now they're interested in exploring it, right? Is that the basic gist?
Say that again.
So for a long time, Smiths wasn't interested in developing in this property. But now they're interested and we're going to give, give, basically give them a year to.
To finalize that and actually commit. Yeah, that's correct. And that's kind of what we've been negotiating with them all along is we are highly focused on solving the need for grocery stores and certain portions of our community. And of course, West Side of Provo is one of those. And that we're interested in helping them or moving this project forward if they can make that happen. But if not, we're looking at other locations as well. And I think one of the big motivators behind this frankly, was the decision that we all made a little over a year ago to rezone this piece of property, property to residential. That re-engaged them, re-energized this project. And we're farther along, I think, than we've been since probably they made their first proposal to develop it 20 years ago. So.
My concern would be that this basically just gives them an opportunity to lock things up again for a whole nother year.
Well, so there's a couple of things that need to happen, right? It's still residential. So before it can go forward, we have told them that we will initiate the rezone to commercial.
Okay.
But that, but that rezone will have a sunset clause that if they don't perform within a certain window of time, it'll revert back to residential. And, and the same thing with this incentive, we're willing to enter into this incentive agreement, but if they haven't exercised that within a year, it goes away. And, and along with that, you know, we've continued to tell them that we're happy to work with them if they're serious about moving forward. But if this is going to be something that happens the next five, 10 years, we're probably going to find someone else to build a grocery store on the west side.
Well, why wouldn't we just wait to rezone then until we know they're serious? Right?
Well, because part of their, I mean, what I'm concerned about potentially is them formally submitting a site plan, having us approve it and accept it. And then for whatever reason, the project doesn't get funded. This year, well, maybe it'll get funded next year. Well, maybe not next year, maybe the year after that. But still they've locked this piece of property up, right? So if they've submitted a site plan and, and they're showing good faith that they intend to go forward and we agree to amend, to change the zone to commercial to allow that to happen, our expectation is that that would happen in six months to a year. And if it's not going, if it doesn't happen, then it will revert back. And I think that gives us some flexibility to then part, to look at other opportunities within that window. It gives the property owner, the, the adjoining property owner that's worked with them for years and years to find some other use and maybe build some residential there instead, so that they don't continue to just keep the west side locked up because they own the property.
No, I have more leverage though. If we just say, we'll rezone this when you're really, when you're moving forward, right? Like, why do we have to rezone it now? Or sorry, in the, in the near term with, I guess I'm just worried that they're going to lock this up for another year.
I guess I don't know how to move it forward without some, some of that happening, right? You can't approve a site plan on a piece of project unless it meets the zone.
Okay.
Right? So some of those things you couldn't allow to move forward unless we did our part. And so the only way to kind of inch it along, but, but make sure that they're committed and that they're really serious is to say, it's got a sunset clause on it. So it will revert.
Yeah, I, that makes sense. All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Has the council already agreed to rezone it with a sunset clause?
No, that's just going to be our suggestion. We haven't even approached you with the rezone.
I guess I'm just a little nervous about the staff representing the council when they have not made that kind of commitment.
Oh, no. You guys can make your decision to do whatever. I'm just suggesting this is probably what we'll propose to you guys. If you don't want to do that, you're more than welcome to do something different.
Yeah, I'm just sensitive to the fact that the council's powers and duties include zoning and.
Sure, absolutely. No, I didn't mean to suggest that I was implying that you guys were going to do something you haven't done yet. I was just telling you what we would recommend you do.
And then another thing to note, I think it was a year and a half ago that this money was set aside as an incentive. So if, if it gets to the end of this one-year horizon, that's two and a half years that this money has been sitting as an incentive for this property, which is, it really doesn't show that it's been an instigator of change or development.
Counselor Fillmore?
I just wanted to chime in to say, I think this is a great approach. We've been nurturing this project for a long time. And the efforts of the mayor and then your department seem to be on the verge of bearing fruit. So I think this approach makes a lot of sense. But just a couple of questions. Is there the possibility that you, that Smiths, for whatever reason, drags its feet for a year, gets there in one year and then comes in hat in hand and says, we need another year. Does that preserve their TIF option or not? Or is it, is it definitely up in one year? It's a kind of a Fisher cut bait deadline for them.
I mean, that's a, the state legislation doesn't necessarily require us to put a one-year sunset provision in there. We're doing that or suggesting that the council do that because I think for one, it shows good faith on our part with the state legislature that we understood the law. We're only pursuing this because we have a project that we'll go for it, but won't go for it before the July 1st deadline. But that we don't intend to keep this opportunity open indefinitely. That it's something that we intend to act on quickly. So that's one. I think the second thing is, I think it shows to the potential retailer our intent to move forward quickly. And that if they can't move forward quickly for whatever reason, then our willingness to participate goes away. And, and I, I like that because that's the message we've been trying to convey to them all along.
Yes, I see the carrot. I don't see the stick.
Then I guess the stick is it goes away, right? They could still do a store, but they're not going to do it with our help.
This would not in any way preclude the city from negotiating with other potential grocery stores or superstores, right?
At that location?
Any location in South Provo.
No, no, we can continue to do that. But, but the, the limiting factor is there, there aren't any others that really are in a position for us to talk about an incentive agreement with. And so these are the, the two that are before you tonight are the only two that we're preserving the right to do that on. Other discussions that we would have with somebody else, it's probably going to be much more difficult, if not impossible, for us to incentivize those projects if we needed to.
I understand. I'm just saying with respect to the so-called stick, if, if the one year is not an absolute deadline, but subject to further extensions, you know, the stick has a little less efficaciousness.
Sure.
Efficacy. Yes. The other question I had was the, it says a site plan is attached. Can you show us a picture of the site plan?
I thought that was in the packet. Is it not? Yes. So, so we intentionally, and I'm sorry, Bill, I was confused by your, your question. This is more, instead of the site plan, this is more the project, the outline of the project area, so to speak. Okay? Well, we do have some, but, but since we're still trying to work out exactly what those boundaries are, where their entrances and egresses are, I hesitated to show those tonight because I don't want anybody, I don't know, becoming interested or excited about that, either positively excited or negatively excited until we actually know how, how it's going to lay out. And so I just thought it would be better since we don't have to put a site plan in if we just kind of identify what the outline of the project area is instead.
Well, I understand.
But I'm happy to share that with you if you'd like to see it.
I appreciate that.
You bet.
I, I understand the reasoning for not putting something out that's half-baked and encouraging criticism of something that's not ready to go public. What, maybe you can just tell us what the elements of the site plan are besides.
Yeah. So what they're anticipating is about 120,000 square foot store. And it would have a fuel center as well on the west side on the Geneva roadside. And so the entrances would be off of Center Street, but then there would be an entrance into the Fuel Island on the Geneva roadside as well. The circulation for the truck traffic would come off of Center Street around the back of the building and then back out on Shiva. It's kind of what they're anticipating at this point.
Okay, so 120,000 square feet, would that be comparable to the Smiths in Orem?
I'm not sure how big that one. No, I think that one's, well, I don't, I don't honestly know how big that one is. Their, their Smiths marketplaces are about 130,000 square feet. So it's not quite a, a full-sized marketplace, but it's pretty close. I mean, and they vacillated between a 90,000 square foot store, up to 130 square foot store. And finally, based on the parking and circulation, 120 was kind of the sweet spot that they arrived at. Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah.
One downtown.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thanks. That's helpful.
You bet. I'm sorry, Travis. Yes?
No, no, Counselor McKay. Yes.
I was curious about number five in the memorandum. They will construct park improvements as shown. I'm just curious what the improvements will be that they do to the park.
Well, one of the things that we're talking about, and we're trying to negotiate, and again, this is one of the reasons why we were a little bit hesitant. To make all of this fit, there's prob, they're probably going to have to encroach into the park a little bit. Exactly how much, we're, we're kind of unsure because they're still playing with that. But one of the things that the Parks Department has been trying to do to create, to maximize the opportunity with the improvements that they're doing to the ball fields is create more parking. And so what we're trying to do is to get help, is to have the, the developer help us maybe create some parking along the northern boundary of their site that the Parks Department could benefit from. So exactly how that works out and who does what, you know, they utilize some of the land, but maybe they help us with the parking or, or help us design that or grade that or, or construct part of that. We're trying to negotiate through that. But that's what that's an attempt to address is that we, we see a collaboration there that could, although, you know, although there will be a little bit of a park impact, it also be a benefit as well. Because I mean, I think with the improvements that they're making to the park, that was one of their intentions anyway. And so this kind of accomplishes some of what they wanted to do. And maybe there's a good partnership there.
Counselor Whipple.
Yeah, so I'm excited about this. I'm excited about the possible grocery store and gas station and improvements to the park. I like that there's a one year sunset provision because I want to see movement on this project. And so I think that's really useful for us as we're talking to our residents to show that we're trying to get them to get going on this instead of of losing the opportunity to give an incentive because of HB 151. I have a question about the third point in this M O U. And I'm just kind of stuck on the grammar of it. I'm a little bit confused with what it says. So is it that we're providing as an incentive payment, partial reimbursement of the site improvements?
Well, so let me explain to you, although we've set aside funding that we could possibly use to incentivize this project. I'm resistant to just writing a retailer check. And so what we have told them is we will need to see as this project gets finalized, a performer that kind of shows what a gap is. And then we can work towards what what things we could participate in that seem appropriate. I mean, there's a major power line that goes right through the middle of that property that's going to need to be moved. So at some point, when they know what the cost of that is, they may come back and say, that's an impediment to us being able to move this store forward. Because frankly, we have other sites around the country that don't have an obligation like that that would be cheaper. So if the city can find a way to help us relocate that power line, we think we can move on building the store first. And I think that's appropriate. And so we would say that's perfect. That's how we would use the money that we've set aside. We'll participate in the in moving that power line. I mean, that's just an example. It may not be that. It may be something else. But from my perspective, our ability to to participate somehow in site work with the with the parking field or with other infrastructure is a much better way for us to incentivize as opposed to, yeah, you know, here's some money to kind of offset your construction costs. I'd rather find something to attach it to. So that's what we're suggesting there.
So.
And I don't know exactly what it's going to be yet, so we're trying to kind of leave that a little bit open.
So it could be an incentive payment, or it could be partial reimbursement of site improvements.
Just as a guess, I'm thinking maybe what it's supposed to say is incentive payment for partial reimbursement.
And that's fine if we need, yeah.
Okay.
That's fine. Yeah, I appreciate the clarification. That's what our, that's what our intent was. So if it needs to be said better, please, that's great.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's fine.
I guess I should start my, before I jumped into my questions, just say, I'm glad you all are working on something for a grocery store.
Thank you.
In this area. So.
Thank you very much.
Say that, you know, good job on that, of course. So basically, this is kind of our only, our only option right now.
Yeah.
Right? So.
Well, just so you know, I mean, and and I, we don't like to work this way, so there's two things I feel badly about. It's the last minute. This is your last council meeting of the of the year, and we would have preferred it to have been earlier. But in all of our work with the potential retailer, it's been difficult to get all the right people at the right time to get it to this point. And so unfortunately, we're here. We also would rather have this in front of you so that we were having this discussion today. And you weren't approving it until two weeks later. So I feel bad that it's back to back on your agenda as well. And we, it's unfortunate it's not planned, and hopefully you can be a little bit patient and tolerant with us that we understand how you work. And we weren't trying to sneak it in. It's just kind of everything came together at the last minute. And so that's why we are the way we are.
I think my only concern is, but I think the fact that we got nothing else going on is kind of like, I guess there's no downside, but just does it continue to scare away other potential retailers? Who might be looking at other areas of the of the of the west side? You know, oh, Smiths has this locked up for another year now. You know, we need to wait and see what they want to do, and then we lose a year and then Smiths pulls out and says, you know, never mind. So there's some risk there is.
There is, but having said that, though, we've had the same conversation with, there's at least a couple of other either landowners or developers or grocers that are interested in specifically the west side and in Provo in general that we've been working with as well. And so I think, you know, we've kind of told all of them the same thing. We're trying to solve a problem and we've, you know, we're committed to it. We've set aside some resources to make that happen. And we're probably going to play with whoever can move the quickest. But there is a lot of interest in the west side. And I think our efforts to kind of rezone this property and then to continue to search for other retailers that might be interested have helped kind of, well, here, let me just, there was a comment from a grocer that we were working on that had not been aware that we had rezoned the property to residential. And once we told them about that, they said, well, that's amazing. We we didn't know that you had had done that. And that completely changes our level of interest in looking at a grocery store opportunity on the west side. So although they've had this kind of locked up for maybe 20 years, I think some of the things that we've done have kind of opened the door in a way that we haven't had opened in the past.
I just noticed, so November 30th, so this gives them more like eight, 17 months or so. Right?
Harson David.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry. I'm sorry. This year, that's this year. My bad. Okay. Thank you, David. That's why you're here. All right.
So the only downside from my perspective is if we don't do it, then we lose, we lose the opportunity to incentivize. And that's going to be the future going for every retail project after July. These are just a couple where we specifically had a focus and we think that there's a reason for us to preserve this right. So.
Yeah, I mean, in the end, if another retailer came in and said, well, we're looking at somewhere, something on the northwest side of Provo. And but we know Smiths has a year to, you know, negotiate with you guys or whatever it is. It's not like a grocery store gets built overnight anyways.
Right.
You know, they, they could still, we could be working on two projects contemporaneously.
And we intend to.
And a developer, another developer or another retailer could say, hey, we're going to take the chance and start working on this and
That's correct.
Put the effort in in anticipation that Smiths isn't going to move forward or whatever. So it doesn't really kill, I'm just so, I think I'm just so conscious of the fact that Smiths has had this property locked up for 20 years. And now we're giving them another year or whatever. So it just makes me a little nervous, but.
No, we are too. I'm sympathetic to that. And we're trying to, I don't know, be careful about that in as many, in as many ways as we can, but I I share your concerns.
Additional comments or questions? Okay, Keith, is the next item related to this?
So yes, it's it's exactly the same, but the but and so all the same things we've talked about apply, but this is.
Let me introduce it. Let's roll into it. And then so this next item is a joint resolution of Provo City Corporation and the redevelopment agency of Provo City announcing their intention to prepare a joint development agreement for the development of commercial development in southwest Provo Development. Development. We'll just say it a few more times. This is also presented by Keith Murray, Economic Development Director, and David Walter, Director of Redevelopment, the Redevelopment Agency.
Oh, all the same principles that we've discussed already apply to this one. If you remember right, a little over a year ago, we came to the city council and asked you to rezone the piece of property at the intersection of Lakeview and 500 West, right off of the I 15 interchange from agricultural to commercial. And we wanted to do that to kind of show our, basically what our, what our plan was for the future that we thought that this had a high commercial opportunity. So this is another site where there's a lot of active interest in creating a retail opportunity here. This one is not quite as mature as the last one was. And actually, I did not have plans to bring this one before before you until I had a conversation with the broker last week who said, you know, we're heavily, heavily interested in this and we, if there is something that we need to do to preserve that opportunity, we should do it. And so that's why it's in front of you. The the landowner is interested. The broker that represents the retailer is interested and think that this is an ideal site for what they want to do there. We do not have an L O I on it. Or and so we're kind, we didn't include the retailer's name in this application because I think it's very premature to do that. And so I would encourage you to resist doing that tonight as we talk about this. But they are working on putting together site plans that could allow this kind of a project to happen. What kind of an incentive, if any, might be proposed or discussed here? We haven't even gotten to that point yet. And and so really, this is just kind of a blanket asking you to kind of allow us to have some economic development discretion, if you will, that the that the landlords and landowner and the broker have suggested that there might be a need that they don't know exactly what it is. But if we would be willing to preserve the right to include an incentive opportunity, they would like that. So from my perspective, this doesn't commit us to do anything. If, to your example, Councilmember Hoban, the other site that we just talked about previously doesn't move forward, but this one does. This would give us the opportunity to say, great, we're going to play ball with the one that's farthest along. And I think that's helpful, right? Because that, to me, that encourages either one to continue to move forward quickly, and that's to our advantage.
All right, Counselors.
Was there a resolution attached somewhere? Because it didn't show up in my documents. Was it emailed later?
It should have been for both of them.
So I'm looking at this one on the website. There's three supporting documents and none of them are a resolution or an M O U. And then there's a document called, what is it called? Supporting documents.
Because I've got resolution 2022 for that one as well.
Elizabeth may be able to answer this better. Are you looking on the website at the work meeting or the evening?
Uh, probably looking at the work meeting. Is it under the council?
It might be in the evening meeting.
Um, let me see, let me see. Which one is it? What number? Which action agenda is it tonight? Do you know what number it is?
Number 10.
Number 10.
Oh, well, maybe staff could pull it up and we can review it on the screen. They already had it ready.
Is it an M O U or is it a resolution?
We've got it on the screen now.
I see. Yeah, no, I found it in the, in this evening's document.
A resolution authorizing entering into an M O U.
Correct.
Okay. Thanks. Couldn't find that.
Any questions then?
Well, first of all, thank you again for your hard work on. Sometimes we just start peppering you guys with questions and I, we forget to say, you know, hey, good job or whatever.
Thank you.
Questions, Counselor Whipple?
Yeah, so I'm just curious about how the incentives could work with the two different properties.
How do what could work?
Incentives. So we have a pot of money set aside that we could use to, you know, do these improvements or assist with it. So do we anticipate that if both of these move forward, we would divide that between the two different projects? Or would we allocate all to one if?
I mean, that's a possible, that's a possibility. I I think that's unlikely because I I think we would probably incentivize the one that's farthest along or that moves first. And then let whatever is going to happen with the second one happen on its own. Theoretically, if they both started moving forward in tandem and it made sense. And we could, we could make a contribution that was meaningful with half of it on one and half of it on the other. I I wouldn't mind or wouldn't be opposed to considering that. I wouldn't want to dilute the incentive for either one to a point that it was less meaningful and didn't have as much impact in helping the project go forward. So I wouldn't want to obligate us to do that. I think it's my, in the back of my mind, I've been thinking whichever one was first is probably the one that we would incentivize.
Right. Okay, so we are are really hoping that this will work as incentive for winner take all thing and encourage both of them to move forward with a good project as quickly as they can.
Right.
Because otherwise, the risk is that it becomes kind of a tepid incentive for both of them and neither of them would do it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Both by work.
I'm not really.
You're not ruling out the possibility that both projects could go forward.
No, no, not at all. No.
It's not an either or.
I mean, yeah, I mean, and frankly, they're different enough that I think that there probably is an opportunity for both. And so, yeah, I I'm actually thinking that they probably will, both will in some form.
John Magnus, smartest guy in the room. HB 151, what was the intent behind that? Like, why did the state do that? Are they tired of cities cannibalizing each other or?
Yeah, stop cannibalizing. Also, the states felt like it's got enough economic development. They wanted to slow down. They want to pivot to housing. So they're trying to incentivize housing over economic development now.
I regret that later, but okay. All right. I don't have any concerns with this one. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, Counselor Ellsworth.
I was just going to add, this was never discussed in an R D A meeting. Keith did call me and kind of filled me in after the fact when he got some more information, but it wasn't discussed in our R D A meeting.
So I guess is that just because of how these things are moving?
Yeah, frankly, the one that we presented last night, last week to the Economic Development Committee was the one, the only one we had planned to move forward. And it.
The R D A board.
Yeah, I'm sorry. That's what I meant. It was after that meeting that the other developer called me and said that they were continuing to work on this and that they felt like the need for an incentive ought to be preserved going forward. And could we do, could we consider that? So I called both Councilmember Whipple and Councilmember Ellsworth last week right after that and said, you know, we apologize because that's not how we like to work. We'd rather have discussed this in the executive committee meeting. But we think that there is good reason to move them both forward and that that's what would be on your agenda this evening.
Okay.
So I spoke to Councilmember Whipple last week and to Councilmember Ellsworth today.
Appreciate, given the time sensitivity, you making the effort to reach out and try to inform council members. That's, that's greatly appreciated. Additional comments or questions? Okay.
All right. Thank you.
So we have a 350 agenda item. That's the only agenda item remaining. I almost wonder if crazy question, could we go to closed session and do that and come back? I I mean, I feel bad killing 50 minutes and just taking a 50 minute break. That seems kind of. We don't have anything else on the agenda.
Yeah, we can go into closed session. We can, we can call the parties and have them come quickly.
Well, let me ask, I was gonna say legally, we can. What occurred to me is that I think Elizabeth is staring in shock because it requires creating a different meeting. Okay, okay. So from a tactical, practical standpoint, I guess we're just taking a 50 minute break and. Well, I guess the other option, I don't know if if the presenters for item number seven are available to come. Malia said no. Oh, okay. So.
Yeah. Is there a way to bring him forward quicker, quicker than?
No, he's, he's at an appointment.
Yeah, he had a doctor's appointment. So I mean, it's really up to you whether if he doesn't make it back or if you'd like to continue to a future council meeting, we can do that. Or if you would like me to handle his items, I'm happy to do that. From my perspective, we'd like you to meet him and and have the opportunity for him to present. But if you feel like you want questions answered, I'm happy to cover them this evening, whatever you feel is is best.
Take a break and wait. Looks like most council members would just prefer to take a 50 minute break and then when Tom's here, we'll, we'll, we'll go ahead and reconvene. So at this time, we'll take a 50 minute break, be back at 350 for the final agenda item. Everybody go get some day work, day job work done, right?
Or Travis, we would love to have you come over and walk through the offices. If you would rather do that for 50, to kill 50 minutes.
I would, but I don't know about the rest. Either way, we're going to take a 50 minute break. Those who would like to can join the mayor and.
No kidding, right?
All right. Thank you. All right, welcome back to our council meeting Tuesday, June 21st at 350, 3 P M. Our next item of business is a presentation from the Parking Division presented by Tom Thorpe, our Parking Program Manager. Tom, welcome. Look forward to hearing what you have to say.
Thank you, Counselor. So I was asked to, this is actually a wrong slideshow up here. Was asked to kind of just talk with you all about some of the priorities we're working on in the Parking Division. And listed four quickly that are parking on Center Street and evaluation of paid parking in Provo and evaluation of creating a municipal parking authority in Provo and evaluation of parking issues when solutions in North Joaquin and on Slate Canyon Drive. And what you have posted here was a draft that we were working on, so I apologize for that. And what you have posted here was a draft that we were working on, so I apologize for that.
Sorry, we can take a second to pull it up. No problem.
There it is. So parking on Center Street. Yeah. See, is this in work? There we go. Parking on Center Street. So Center Street has been managed pretty effectively with one officer devoted to it. With the equipment that we use, the camera vehicles, we're able to patrol most of downtown with one officer. Moving, moving forward, I'd like to add an additional officer on days like the 4th of July or 24th of July are big days to serve as an ambassador of Provo, that is the first person of our tourist see. Just mainly to be that first smiling face and welcome to Provo, give directions, things like that. We're pro, down, sorry, Center Street is, like I said, very well effective, effectively managed. There is ample parking available throughout the day. There's not that many citations written for overtime. The majority of our citations written in downtown are safety related citations. Things like blocking sidewalk, blocking sidewalks, things like that. And the, the main public comment that I get negatively for Center Street is that the signage that we have there is confusing. And I all agree that it can get, it gets confusing. And so moving forward, part of, part of that, and we don't have the budget right now to fix the signage, but that would be something that I would see, we would, we would look at partnering with DPI, looking at our signage and addressing that as we move forward. And we can tie that into our directions, directional signage downtown as well. And the la, the second thing I've heard most recently has been some requests from some business owners that we increase the time that we patrol past 6:00 PM and we're evaluating that at this time. My first response to that would be there's not really that big of a need for additional officer downtown, but we do patrol throughout the city past 6:00 PM so we can have an officer swing by more often and, and handle that, that situation. Any questions? Councilman Whipple?
Yes, so I know TMAC had recommendations for completely redoing Center Street. What do you think about, you know, maybe the back end 45 degree angle parking or, or things like that?
Reverse 45 degree back end parking is one of those things that sounds weird, but has been shown to improve safety. But it's weird and it takes a while for people to understand it and, and use it. My, my last conversation with engineering was that they were putting that on hold for a while. Other things that we talked about were using some of the parking spaces as little kiosks or dinner spots. And I've got some paperwork and some engineering drawings that we could do that. I, I have no opinion one way or another. I, I don't see why anyone would want to have dinner out by trap, in the traffic. But if they would want to, I have some safety drawings that we could use to, to do that. And that's simply making sure that, that the diners are safe. Any other questions?
I have a question, yeah. It says adding an officer on foot for event days to work as a Provo ambassador. Does that mean adding an FTE or does that mean adding to someone's shift or?
Adding to, adding to a shift right now.
Okay.
And that would be, you know, we have two full-time officers and what are we up to now? Five or six part-time officers? So we'll have six part-time officers. So it'd be, you know, an opportunity for someone to get some overtime. But I think it, it really pays off for the city to have someone just there to help assist and tell people where they can park, where they can go, where a good place to eat is. Some of those things like that for, for an event day.
Yeah, cool.
Would, would that FTE be like self-funded, like be able to recover the cost of the FTE through citations and such or?
It would be a part-time employee, but we are, we already are very close to self-funding right now off of citations. Okay. I think the benefit to the city, just downtown in any event, would be worth any, any hours not covered by our, our program currently.
So I'm just wondering if that needs to be, you know, a parking officer or if that could just be?
It could be anyone.
A different type of role, you know, that might not even need to have the level of compensation. I just, I'm just wondering, you know, if they're, if they truly are going to just be an ambassador, then maybe that's a different department almost as opposed to, I don't know, maybe I'm misunderstanding it, but it seems like.
It could be.
A parking officer should be focused on.
My people because they know the, they know the lay of the land, they know the city streets, they know where things are, they know downtown. And.
Okay, something to think about.
Right. Any other questions?
Yeah, I did want to say on the signage, like the little signs that we've got in front of the parking spots, those are hard to read because there's too much and the color's not necessarily what you expect. But I love the new signs that we've got outside the parking structures. The new wayfinding signs with the big P and everything. Those haven't been up for very long, but those are incredibly helpful and make those structures look much more inviting to members of the public. Because I, we used to have the predatory towing thing in Provo, which meant everyone was scared to park in any parking lot. And things like that are really, really helpful for clarifying that, yes, it's okay, you can park here. So I'm glad that we've, we've got some progress there.
Yeah, and I think it, it, it's our brand of Provo. It's our brand of downtown and like you, I, I agree with what you said. It makes it, makes the public understand that this is a safe place to park. I'm not going to get towed. So. Let me see here. So on the questions and some of the ideas that have been brought up on paid parking, I'd like to test that. Well, one, it was brought up in our 2015 parking study with Kimberly Horn. I'm sure everyone has read it because it's just great, great reading. But I, I would propose that we, we try that along 800 North. It would be a limited, limited cost to the city. We'd be using an app-based system where you pay with your phone essentially in those areas. 800 North specifically because it's a commuter corridor to campus that abuts a neighborhood permit program. So if there, if there's going to be a impact, we'll see it right away between those two areas.
Question? Just, just real quick. So I asked earlier when we were talking about the airport, having a program for this. They said it's an app-based program that we could use elsewhere in the city. Would these be the exact same programs? I, I just feel like one of them could help support the other. You know, if people have to do it at the airport, maybe they are more warm to it somewhere else in the city as well.
They could. And my understanding is that the, the airport did not choose to run an app for pay-by-app. And if I'm wrong, it's easily adjusted. There's, this is at the idea phase right now. What we would do is simply talk with whoever the airport is working with and tell them we want to do a, a six-month trial using their app. And if not, that same company, I, I believe the airport is using Flowbird for some of their work. They're a very sound company. We'd simply use that same app on, on 800 North.
Yeah, my, my confusion is last year when we talked about, you know, doing pay for, you know, the, the app already existed, we could already, you know, just plug right in and, and execute this really easily. And then when we're talking about the airport, it seemed like it was a new type of program. And I would just, you know, if we're going to do something on 800 in a limited use, and I, and I think it's a good idea to consider that, I, I would just, I would just strongly encourage us to use the exact same thing, right? Because if, we just don't want people to have to have different apps around.
Right, we're, we're speaking the same language on this. I, there's, there's three companies I would trust to do it. And Flowbird is the company that was in, in use in the old terminal. I'm not sure if they're in use in the new terminal. And if, if needed, I can have the discussions about bringing them onboard either way. But if they're not there, we can use a national, we can, we can use the national competitor, national process. They have competitive bids that go nationally. We can just jump on any one of these for a sixth, six-month option and then go to a full RFP if necessary. But there will be a lot of pushback in that, but I think we'll see good results really, really quickly.
So I, I like the idea of this, doing this on 800 North, but you say it's a communal location next to a residential permit area. We have not actually set up that as a permit area yet. So would we need to do that so that the 800 North thing could be effective?
No, there's, right in there next to, what, what I mean in saying that is the neighborhood is, is it, it's a residential neighborhood with the permitted parking in the apartments and right in front. And we can move forward with that RPP area there as well.
Okay.
And we can test that to see what the impact's going to be. And that'll show us whether or not we really need to push the RF, the RPP in that, that section of, of the neighborhood or if we can simply monetize 800 North and see how it works.
So you would think that we could go ahead and do the paid parking on 800 North without doing anything else in Joaquin and observe it and see if that pushes more parking into the neighborhood?
I, I guarantee you that is what we'll see happen.
Okay, and then based on how much of an impact would that?
We'll see how far we need to go with a residential permit program to the south of campus.
So we've, we've had difficult discussions regarding parking in that neighborhood. Does, does this seem to be a, a good way to kind of test the waters? Or for actually implementing a solution there?
It's a horrible way at testing the waters, but it's probably our only way at testing waters, I think.
Is the 800 North idea?
At this point, I think no matter what we do with that section of the neighborhood, we're going to, people will be upset, but we already have them upset with intruder parking in the neighborhood as it is.
Yeah, I think upsets the default.
Right, and this shows, this shows we have a solution, we're trying, and this will work. And as the neighborhood sees that, are they going to be more willing to work with us? And I think the answer to that is going, going to be a yes.
So how, how long would you want this to go before we reevaluate data and everything? Like, would it be like a semester thing since we have?
Six months.
Okay, so if we wanted to jump on something like this, would we be able to get it set up like at the beginning of August so that it's in place before students come back for the fall semester?
Yes.
And so then we would see how it works during this fall semester and, and start to reevaluate in the, the late winter, early spring?
Yes.
Okay.
All it requires is signage to be installed. In speaking with Flowbird, is a company I've done, I've spoken with the most about it. It requires us setting up a, an account specifically for it, installing signage specific to the need. And then we're up and rolling whenever we set the date to do it.
Okay.
Before we do that, we do need to have active discussions with the, with BYU, with the community at large.
Do you have a good liaison with BYU?
I'll find one.
All right.
I know we have one with the mayor's office, but I'm more than willing to work with whoever we need to.
Yeah, I know this, this has been a real sticking point, but I'm, I'm glad that we have a possible path forward on this.
I, I know it's going to be painful no matter what we do. But we're at the point, I know we need to do something, so I'm willing to, I'm willing to.
Impel yourself?
Step on the rake and smacked in the face with it. Because I know we can, we can make adjustments up or down. And this is, this is a really good area to start. The impact, if, if we were to start this on Main Street, I'd be worried about the impacts on our businesses. We know, or I can't say I know, I, reasonable suspicion that a lot of the intruder parking into this neighborhood are BYU students who want to park there instead of parking in the freebie while you parking to the north of campus where they could park. And so I'm willing to make, I'm willing to make the, start the discussion there. Does that make sense? And like I said, I'm willing to step on the rake on this one, just to, we've got to start somewhere and I'm, I know this is the place to start. So any questions? All right.
I'll just say thanks for working on this. Thanks for coming to Provo. Parking in a college town feels like you cut off one head and two grow back, right? So thanks for what you do.
Well, we can make it work. It's, it's not going to be anybody's favorite topic until we get it working, but we'll make it work. So the garage is downtown. So we've, we've, we own in, in total or impartial about six garages downtown. These are very expensive city buildings that have not been upkept. And it's kind of a travesty. So I would like to, they were built with economic development funds to kind of draw in business. And that's an incredibly smart thing to do. Because it's one of the most expensive things that developers refuse to want to pay for. They want to try to drive down their investment in a parking garage. I would like to, and is start looking at those as a valuable city asset. One of the things I'm doing with engineering is getting one of their contract engineers to walk through each one of the garages with me and start a list of what needs to be repaired and how quickly it needs to be repaired and, and fixed up. Then I'd like to start working with Keith and his group about trying to use those structures to draw in other businesses and, and kind of use those as an economic development tool. Or in, you know, in the least, start getting the information out to our university students to come park their cars in there for a monthly fee instead of leaving them on the city streets. Especially over winter vacation where they become a snowball and create more problems for us. But those are a great asset that we can start using to build. What was one of the things in our 2015 parking report was building a, a parking authority off of these assets and using these assets to kind of drive the growth of the parking department in, into something that can really build and, and work throughout town. All right, any questions?
You mentioned using the garages as where people can rent it for a month or whatever. So is there enough space, there's obviously plenty of free space available to use it in that way?
I, I have no idea and that's part of the problem. So some of the gate systems don't work, so they're not counting how many vehicles are still in there, what's left. I think Javin, who was working this position before I showed up, did a great job trying to track down what was contracted to be available, what was actually available, how it was being used. And I still don't think here I have a very good idea of what's happening in those garages.
So we don't know if there's space for rentals? Okay.
That are in the, in the garages, but we don't know how they're allotted and how they're used.
Okay.
And so the, the fastest way to control that would be to look at what, what the gate arm system is and what's governing it. And then reissuing the correct number of access cards per the contract to the different organizations.
You mentioned taking, I don't see on here, but it was in our stuff. It says ultimately that you want to own the garages and.
Yeah.
Operate them. I do really like that idea. I, from the businesses downtown, I haven't heard anything positive about the company that does it right now.
Right.
I've heard a lot of, there's a lot of conflict there.
Can I make a comment or two just to help? Just to clarify, when we, when we say we've participated in the, in these parking garages, generally speaking, we don't own them. We might own the property underneath them, the developer, the, or whoever owns the structure themselves. So just to be clear, one of the things Tom's talking about doing, that's kind of his last bullet point that I think is really important though, is to think through, does it make sense or what? think through, does it make sense or what point would it make sense to create a parking authority in the downtown area? That could oversee those as an asset and, and start to work with the different garage owners to determine to what level are we involved? How can we participate in a way that's more meaningful so that the parking, you know, the municipal parking or the ma- that, that authority maybe has more involvement to say the structure needs maintenance. We expect you to take care of it. Here's the penalties if you don't or, or whatever. Um, here's a number of stalls that are available. Here's the number that you use. Here's the number that's available to the public. So that we just start to collect all of that information and a parking authority maybe has more management opportunity to advertise those as an asset and a benefit like Tom said, as an economic development tool to, to encourage and promote business downtown and also to help our residents understand that there are parking opportunities, maybe not right in front of the business where you're going to shop, but within a close parking structure that we want you to take the advantage to, to utilize. So just to clarify.
Thanks, Keith. Yeah, I get in the minutia of things too quickly. Sorry. Does that make sense? And when I say I want to own it, I want it to be this asset that continually feeds back into the city. And things like that. So.
So I was just going to add like for the science bank building, for example, there's no overnight parking. So it's a huge garage. You know, city has that, you know, uh, well, in the science building, there's no apartments. So, so nobody's overnight, nobody's overnight in the science bank building. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of potential utilization, you know, that could be utilized in a different way. But also another thought as we were talking is one of the biggest pieces of asphalt in Provo is the splash summit and we only use it for three months, three and a half months of the year. You know, there's got to be a way to commoditize some of that parking for folks who are here for the school year, but not for the summer for their parking. So anyway, just a suggestion to maybe look into coordinating with Splash Summit on some of their, they got a big lot, you know, and, and it sits empty for most of the year.
And it's, it's a lot of it goes back to that willingness of the driver.
Yeah.
To park their car someplace else and to reduce that anxiety of, oh my gosh, what's going to happen to my car while I, well, I don't see it for 30 seconds.
Yep. So.
Yeah. And we've all been there. So.
Uh, one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
So if we have a parking authority, would that also be something that could helpful with unhoused people camping out in parking garages? I know sometimes it's difficult to get them out unless you do a rid of trespass or something. Would, would we be able to address those problems more efficiently?
We, uh, those issues are very difficult. You could, I'm sure if you talk to, to the police, they have the same problems. It requires that we, uh, notify the public that there's no camping in the, in the garage. And then it's a matter of who does the, who does the public contact and are the parking officers are simply not trained for that? But we can certainly work with legal to sign them correctly and then work with parking staff and police staff, police officers to establish a protocol of how to how to, uh, evict from the garages. So one of the things that council whip asked me to, uh, look into was Slate Canyon Drive in North Joaquin. I know that Slate Canyon has looked at residential parking permits several times and has never or has not as yet met a favorable majority. And the same is basically true for Joaquin. Uh, since I've been here roughly six months, I have not had a phone call from my either neighborhood about starting the process again or talking about permits. Uh, they may have talked to one of you, but no one's reached out to me about it yet. I have had my officers take me to both areas and drive around. I think there's some areas that we can ease some troubles with better signage, uh, painting some curbs. Uh, I know we've gotten away from that in the city, but I think there's really some good op, good reasonable ness in painting in both areas. Uh, and once they're, once they're covered, then my officers can follow up with citations.
We have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Um, I have had a number of residents reach out to about Slate Canyon saying that they're like, they'd like no parking on Slate Canyon Drive for safety issues and help with enforcement as far as occupancy and such of the houses there. So I wonder if that's been thought of and what your opinion is on that. At number two, I wonder about, I've heard that before that we don't do painting anymore. I've heard about it in the Joaquin area and that people wish that we still did it. What is the reasoning behind not doing the painting anymore?
Uh, personally, I've been told that it was a previous mayor didn't want to paint the curbs. I, I look at paint as a very inexpensive way of traffic control.
Yeah.
I, what I look for in my training experience is site, the, the site triangles, as you go down the road, what can be visibly done? And I know that's what our streets department looks at. Uh, so I would, I would really kind of turn to their professional side to, to address these areas of, that need to be no parking or should be no parking. And then my recommendation would be to follow what the engineer suggests, be that more signage or, or painting red for no parking. And then we can easily follow up with the enforcement.
I, I just want to add some color to Catrice's questions. Um, I don't know of anyone in the city who spent as much time on Slate Canyon Drive as I have. Um, and I lived there for six years and, uh, one of the primary issues with Slate Canyon Drive is not the rentals and not the occupancy. There's effectively very little or no o- over occupancy right now because of some really aggressive ordinances that the city implemented a few years ago. Um, one of the biggest issues on Slate Canyon Drive is that the lots are so narrow, there's a two car garage, but there's no room for a side yard. So if you had two cars and then your teenager had a third car at your home, there's no side yard to park on, period. So your third car has to park on the street. Um, and then a lot of people on Slate Canyon Drive happen to use their garage as like attic or storage space. So they end up parking in the driveway or they end up parking on the street. And I have spent so much time documenting this, talking about this, investigating this. Um, I worked with, uh, the parking committee a few years ago. It's, it's really the makeup of that street, the way that the homes are so close together, there is no side yard. And you can only fit two cars in your, in your driveway, period. So anyways, um,
Having lived on Slate Canyon, I'd have to agree with you.
Sorry?
Having lived there on Slate Canyon, I'd have to agree with you in a lot of that.
Oh, you've lived there too? Okay.
But I would add to that, there's, there's a lot that can be done, especially at the corners. There's, there is a lot of blockage of the, of the site triangles. And there is a lot that could be done with some no parking areas as you approach the street interchanges and those situations. But it is very tricky. It's a very, it's very easy to go above the speed limit on that street. It's, um, so I, I don't have a, a good answer for you. I have, you know, that we can address some of those issues with our streets engineering staff. And then we can, and then we'll be glad to enforce it.
But it, but if you get comments, would you please be sure to
Yes.
those to Tom so we can make sure that we're responding to them or we're aware of them. It'll help us kind of in our valuation of what the concerns are and what we need to do.
And in the least, I can have an officer go out immediately and address problems.
Well, I send the enforcement stuff to, cause I've received lots of emails about over occupancy there and I send it to Scott Johnson.
Okay.
So I just wanted to follow up on the curb painting question. Um, and this may not be your department, maybe engineering, but I've noticed that the last few concrete things that have been painted over the last few years, it flakes off really fast. And I'm wondering if, because we don't do lead based paint anymore or something like it just doesn't stick. But I find painted curbs to be incredibly useful when I'm parking in a place that I don't know very well.
So do most of your traffic safety manuals, engineering manuals and things.
So is, is that an engineering decision that we need to talk to somebody in that department about?
I think so. And it's, paint will flake. It does it in Phoenix. It'll do it here.
Yeah.
And it's, it's something that I think most drivers are looking for to know for sure where to park and where not to park.
Do you know how much paint costs relative to installing a new sign with a signpost and everything?
I don't. I'd have, I'd have to guess that the, uh, the signage would be more expensive than, than the paint.
Thanks.
It's been a while since I've done, been in charge of street maintenance.
You haven't priced those recently.
Yeah. So, um, parking, the parking authority or parking commission. Uh, again, this is one of the recommendations from the 2015 parking study. Uh, I know it's, parking is pretty contentious in our history, uh, but it what, what this does is brings the parking control to more of the common man, if you will, that a lot, um, brings business holders, business owners into the discussion of parking, brings neighborhoods into the discussion of parking as well. That doesn't mean that it negates any of your decisions or any of your influence on it. You would, you would be ultimately give it a thumbs up or a thumbs down. Uh, but it does allow neighborhoods to discuss problems and solutions. And it allows
What would that take? Funding?
It would be more of a legal, legal side of things. We'd have to really investigate how to do it. That you can turn parking then into an enterprise fund. I think you can do it anyway, but it makes more sense to use as it becomes an enterprise fund as a, as an authority on its own, uh, than they can, uh, bid and not bid, but they can, uh, issue, uh, sorry, train, I thought derailed. Anyway, that, uh, but it allows us to work together with other entities like BYU and UVU. I, you know, that it's one of the things we can offer them a seat at the table to discuss problems and solutions as well. As with, you know, Joaquin neighborhoods, Slate Canyon, these other neighborhoods to talk about issues. And then it's not simply a neighborhood fight against city council. It's a neighborhood invested in coming to a solution. Any other questions? And wait.
Chairman, thank you. Um, just to give a little bit of context on the parking enforcement question and red, red curb versus signage. As, as you probably know, we have, um, and again, not so much in recent years with the drought, but before that it was very frequent that, that curbs were covered with snow, uh, for a good part of the year. And we actually had a justice court judge that eventually told us if you don't have a vertical sign that's visible all year long, all season long, then, um, someone parks in just a red curved area. I'm going to dismiss the charge, uh, because you have to give them adequate notice that there is a parking restriction there. And so the question became not, do we paint red curbs or not, but do we paint red curbs in addition to posting a sign? Now, again, that, that certainly could have changed. That was probably, you know, 15, 20 years ago when, uh, when we kind of got that edict for parking enforcement. But that's the reason why we have gone away from red curbs uh, in favor of a vertical parking sign that's visible 24/7, 365.
But I'd suggest it'd be worth talking with engineering about the cost on it, doing both at the same time.
What I've seen is that curbs weren't painted and signs weren't installed. And so then you had cars parking too close to the intersections, blocking sidewalks at intersections. And so we've had to specifically request no parking signs in different areas of Joaquin and, and other neighborhoods to restore those sightlines. So I think that was one of the bad unintended consequences.
Yeah, I, I would not disagree with that. Again, though, I think it is pretty clear. There are statutory restrictions regardless of whether you have a sign or not, that you can't block a sidewalk. You can't be within 30, 20? Okay. Okay. 20 feet of a crosswalk and 30 feet of a stop sign. And, and that's regardless of whether you have a sign or a red curb. Now again, would a red curb help? It, it might. Uh, but again, I would also hate to have a circumstance where we go out and have to sign and red curb every intersection in the city to, to take the sort of de facto requirement for, um, for someone to just understand the law and have a driver's license. So again, that's, that's a little bit the challenge, trying to find that balance.
Yeah. And complicating that challenge is we have drivers coming from different states with different standards and everything. And even though ignorance of the law is not an excuse, it does mean that we get lots of bad parking.
That's for sure.
Well, let me also point out that, um, Sandy does a remarkable job of training every new driver on their first citation in Provo by issuing, you know, changing them to a warning and letting them know what, what the rules are. So, um, last slide, last thing I was asked to talk about was the ITOD zones. These are the zones where we reduce parking requirement along, um, transit, yeah, transit quarter, sorry. I give me a minute. I have a massive TDI and need to reboot. So these are most, these are the intermodal transit options. They are effective in areas where we have a more robust transit system. And Provo is, and Utah is getting there. Uh, I think we're doing great things with our scooters and bikes. I think the bikes will be a, a big difference. And I, I think these have a great idea behind them. I can speak to the zones we built in Phoenix. As soon as we had a grocery store right downtown, it worked great. Uh, so I think the closest grocery store we have is the Smith's. So we're in every, we're doing everything right as far as making it work, that at least that I can see as an outsider. The only thing I can see that some buildings have added have been car shares such as, um, um, they either buy a car and devote it to the building. Or they, they'll sign up with, uh, uh, a car share service and, uh, have that there for the building as well. So I think that those are two areas where if need be, we can request that, that developers look at something like that. But my, my understanding is that a lot of these have been bought by uh, single men or single women who end up getting married and having a kid and then two cars and then they've, they have become uh, made themselves out, out, uh, outside the aspect of, of the building themselves. So I don't think it's any fault of, uh, planning or the developer or anything else. It's just growth. And they don't really want to sell the apartment just yet or rent someplace else. So, and that's a hard one to say because it's really hard. It's, it's been hard to kind of figure that out over the last couple of weeks, what's happening in these, in these districts. I think we're doing everything we can. I think we're doing it appropriately. But it's, we're just not quite there yet as far as our transportation hubs. So any questions on this?
So the last little gray squares about commercial parking?
Yeah. Uh, the commercial parking, um, so one of the things that Mexico City did with all their zones was just basically flip it. So instead of having, having a minimum, it was a maximum. And that's, that's the only other thing I could recommend that we're not doing in Provo. So uh, and then you're, especially with your commercial zones, uh, so any new building that's going in, you can take these, uh, and Smith's is a good, a good example. Smith's parking lot there is half empty, but we've required them to build that entire lot, correct? So we can reduce what they're required to build or we can ask them to do these parking studies to show it's actually used and allow the developer to further develop in that lot. If that makes any sense. So with that, that's one of those things that requires a change in our code. And it requires the developer to do the, the studies and submit them to us to, to show what's actually being used. Cause a lot of these, a lot of these development, a lot of these required studies were developed in the 50s and 60s and they've never really been changed. Does that make sense? So they, they're still going to require the same numbers that they have for 30, 40 years. That's one of the big fights in, in my field is how to change them.
Um, I'm sure there definitely are some lots that are that way, but there's also some commercial.
I'm sure there definitely are some lots that are that way, but there's also some commercial where I can't get parking, and I end up going someplace else because I can't get parking there, like, you know, over by canes and crumble in that area. There's different parts of Provo where parking makes, lack of parking makes me not go there.
Right.
For the commercial stuff where you can't park on the street and stuff.
Right. So, and we can't, so, the final thing I would say was, these judgment calls have to be made very with as much information as we can get, and they have to be made with the idea that once we go this way, we can't go back. So, if we were to reduce the amount of parking that a developer is required to have, we can't at a later time go back and say you have to add more. And so, if we want, if we want to keep them from using street, on-street parking, we have to make it very clear that you can put your building here, but you are not guaranteed any on-street parking with this reduction and, and keep it as policy moving forward.
So, would this be the sort of thing where, say, East Bay, we could look at reducing the parking requirements so you could get business infill in some of those giant parking lots that seem to be underused?
I'm hesitant to say yes, but yes.
Okay.
Because, and the reason I'm hesitant
But it depends on each project and
We really have to look at each project. We'd really have to do some parking studies to see what's really happening and not just rely on what the developer tells us is gonna happen.
Right. So, it may be different to do it on the east side of East Bay as opposed to what we would want to do for the Provo Town Center property.
Correct. And it's, it's really when Bill, was one of the first things Bill asked me to research in Provo, and I, I it's daunting because it doesn't, each town is different up and down the Wasatch Front. So, it's, it's one of these things that I, I can't give you a yes, let's do it, or no, let's, let's not. I can tell you how other cities have done it, and it's always, always caused a problem. But eventually, it all works out. So.
It's good to know that we may have, or there may be more flexibility than what we currently have set up for some of those things.
Yes, there is. And, and moving, moving forward, we're going to have to build up. There's not a lot of room for giant parking lots. We're gonna have to require that developers build up and build, build their garages. And we're gonna have to require that they are built so that they can be reused for other structures in the future for as, as developers on the, on our, on these zones as I don't think people are gonna get rid of cars, but if they ever do, we want to take these, we want to take these garages and turn them into other apartments, more apartments. And so, there's a lot of that that goes into these issues.
Well, thank you. Clearly, you've been doing a lot of work to get caught up in the, what, six months or so that you've been here?
Yeah.
That's, it's a big thing to jump into this mess and, and learn what you're dealing with. I, I appreciate this and that you've taken time to look at all these different areas of parking for us.
Well, thank you for your time. Have a great afternoon.
Additional questions? Thanks, Tom. This time, we'll consider a motion to close the meeting. Brian, do you want to let us know what that's for?
Yes, there's a topic to be discussed that involves potential strategy discussion regarding acquisition of property. And therefore, for that reason, it's appropriate to close the meeting by motion.
Like to make a motion that we close the meeting at this time?
One second.
Any discussion on the motion? All right, we'll vote by roll call. Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Ellsworth?
Yes.
Counselor Shipley?
Yes.
Counselor McKay?
Yes.
Counselor Fillmore?
Yes.
And I chair, hope and will vote yes with, and so that is unanimous with Counselor Handley excused. Well, now we now convene our closed session. Something like that.